All right, it is 6:30. I believe we have a quorum, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Present.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus? Is Councilmember Tracus with us?
Not yet.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Harder.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Tracus had me send him a new link, so he should be joining us shortly.
Okay, we will, that's all right. We will be sure to note when he joins us, but we will proceed. It looks like the Journal of the Meetings of September 23rd and September 29th and October 6th have not yet been finalized. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move on to Communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 3rd District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 2, 4th District.
Receive file and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Madam Chair, it looks like Councilmember Tracus has joined the meeting.
Okay, please make sure the record reflects that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number 1, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, item number 1.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 2.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 5, and that will be the order.
Item number 6, 1st District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 7, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Please note that Councilwoman Days would like to co-sponsor that legislation, and that will be the order.
Yes, we will take care of that, Madam Chair. Item number 8, 6th District.
Can some division plat be approved as recommended?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 9, 6th District.
Receive file and the change of managing officer be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, 6th District.
Yes, Madam Chair, as you know, this is a letter to you requesting a committee of the whole concerning the police precinct in District 6, that is Police Precinct Number 3. So with that, I'll receive, file, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole, please.
So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number 11.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, 4th District.
On this, let me first go back to Councilwoman Clancy's communication number 7. I did send an email asking to be a co-sponsor as well. I don't know if you got that or not. And then second, I'm sorry.
I don't recall getting that, Councilwoman Gray, but we can add you as a co-sponsor for that resolution. Can, Madam Clerk, can you make sure that is included? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
It will come from my assistant. And then also, with regards to number 12, I think I want to hold this because there are some Roberts rules of order has changed, I don't know how long ago. And I think we need to further discuss our previous ordinance that we approved, because we approved something, and changes are happening, and we are, we don't know that things have changed, but we've already voted to accept Roberts rules at one time, and it could change, and we not know it, or it could be something that we aren't, that we don't support. So I think I'm going to hold this so that we can have further discussion on this next Tuesday, or possibly in a committee of the whole meeting.
That will be the order.
Item number 13, 4th District.
Receive file and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, 2nd District.
Please drop from the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 22, and that will be the order.
Item number 23, 2nd District.
Receive and, receive file and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order.
Item number 24.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 25, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number 1, 6th District.
Yes, this is a copy of correspondence I sent to the Board of Election Commissions regarding some pretty significant errors in provision of return envelopes to folks that were filing absentee ballots. Again, it points to concerns regarding the legitimacy and accuracy of the coming election. So I think I've asked, as the letter says, that the Election Commission fully investigate the occurrence and report back to the council. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll receive, file, and refer to the directors of the St. Louis County Board of Elections.
So ordered.
Item number 2, 6th District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county executive, please.
So ordered.
Thank you.
All right, it is now time for the report of the county executive. Dr. Page?
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. In Missouri, St. Louis County was the first hit and the hardest hit by COVID-19. We saw what was happening in other parts of the country, and we took steps early to prevent the spread of the deadly virus. We put in place one of the first stay-at-home orders in the country. Without a cure, we knew we had to use all the tools available to us to protect human lives. That included a mandate to wear face coverings, social distancing measures, and limits on gatherings. We are the economic engine of the state, the center of commerce, and a place where thousands a day come to work and to do business. Our livelihoods depend on us maintaining control of the virus, and to do that, we must keep in place measures supported by public health and medical experts who continue to caution us that this virus is still very active, very contagious, and very deadly. Across the country and across Missouri, the number of cases is on the rise. A lack of an early, comprehensive national response and a patchwork of efforts across the country has allowed this virus to rage on. So any talk of loosening restrictions, including eliminating a mask mandate, is premature and irresponsible. We must continue to be leaders in this fight. And there's been a lot of discussion in the past few months concerning public health restrictions, and these restrictions demand sacrifices, but they save lives. Our slow, cautious, and responsible response kept us from an outcome much grimmer. If we let up now, we will see an explosive growth of the virus, and the hard work and sacrifices made by our residents will set back. The decisions we make today continue to be driven by public health experts and medical experts who work in and operate some of the best hospitals in the country, or at the forefront of the battle. They see firsthand the impact this virus has on the body, and they see how contagious it is, and the need to help of everyone in the community to continue responsible actions. Our hospitals are busy, but not yet overwhelmed. The cases are rising sharply in rural areas, and those sickened seek help in the St. Louis region's medical centers. If we become reckless in our response here, our actions could overburden hospitals, adversely affect treatment, and endanger our healthcare workers. The bills before the council tonight do nothing to improve the public health and safety of St. Louis County residents. Evolving political opinion is not good leadership. Public health orders are not always popular, but they save lives. Stay-at-home orders are not embraced by all, but they save lives, too. The mask mandate is not liked by all, but it saves lives. And social distancing is not followed by it all, but it saves lives. And restricting gathering sizes is not always popular, but it saves lives. And that's what should be at the root of all the decisions we make during this pandemic, saving lives. In St. Louis County alone, more than 830 of our friends, relatives, and coworkers have died from this virus. More than 26,000 others have been infected by this virus. And across the country, more than 215,000 lives have been lost. Until we have a vaccine, we must stay the course. We must wear masks, we must continue social distancing, and we must limit gatherings. Masking should not be a partisan issue. The virus is not partisan. We must rise above the political rhetoric. We cannot undermine the sacrifices everyone is making, including our first responders, healthcare workers, and those who work in our grocery stores, drugstores, and restaurants, protecting the health and welfare of the residents of St. Louis County. That's my focus. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. We will now move on to the public forum portion of our meeting. Before we do so, I want to remind everyone of the rules of the public forum. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held at least one hour prior to the meeting's being set to start will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name. The message must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is what we would allow if we were here in the council chambers in person. The administrative director or designee will read the comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the journal. With that, Madam Clerk, please let us know how many comments we have tonight, and proceed with the first comment.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 2,230 written public comments this evening.
Thank you. All right, please proceed with the first comment.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, the first comment is from Laura Stappes. "I'm writing this week to ask you to please pass Bills 222 and 223 to provide oversight of the St. Louis County Executive. I could not be more offended by the blanket accusation made last week, which essentially insinuated that everyone who commented wants to kill grandparents and grocery store workers by not wearing masks. Personally, I wear a mask whenever necessary, as I'm sure the majority of others who commented do. The real issue here is not whether masks should be worn or not, but how the power to make that decision is apportioned. Should one individual have the power to make that decision on his or her own, or should that person be held accountable by the county council with appropriate checks and balances in place? How does wanting that oversight equate to wanting to kill grandparents and grocery store workers? Frankly, it doesn't, and it's deeply disturbing that anyone would imply, would imply that. Whether the county executive is a Democrat or Republican, they should have those checks and balances in place. Residents of St. Louis deserve that, so please vote in favor of Bill 222 and 223. Thank you." From Shannon Robinson. "I support and urge you to support Bills 222 and 223. The fact that both Sam Page and Lisa Clancy say that because you support these bills make you a, quote, 'killer' is not only false, but it is, it is a disgusting stretch of manipulation. They have nothing else to rest their hat on, so they further their scare tactics onto eager followers that feed them flat-out lies. These bills are about the lack of oversight that has been missing from the county executive position. This is not about masks or even killing people, contrary to what Sam and Lisa would like to make anyone think. These bills are not even a Republican or Democrat issue either. It's an American issue. To ensure we have plans in place to protect our rights, our people, and our choices. We all believe in those fundamental rights, and that one person, no matter their degree or background or party affiliation, should not have all the rights. That is not what our country is founded on, and that is not what our country should be founded on. The WHO has come out this week also urging all forms of government to stop any, any all shutdowns as a way to fight COVID. It cites the damage lockdowns are causing people now, as well as the damage they expect to see in a year or more. Also, a declaration from an infectious disease epidemiologist and public health scientist was released stating the grave damaging physical and mental health impacts COVID politics have on us. It's signed by thousands of doctors from everywhere, Harvard, University of Sussex, Scotland, Israel, New Zealand, Yale, Sweden, India, and the University of Oxford, to name a few. Who will listen to these health experts? Or are we still choosing to stick with one doctor at our local health department? To what extent will the council allow this to go on? The county's war on this virus is like all, oh, excuse me, is like all other never-ending wars, like the war on drugs or the war on terror. In the name of righteous cause, innocent lives will be destroyed, government power will expand, and our rights will be taken, never to be returned. As Benjamin Franklin said, 'Any society that would give up a little liberty to gain a little security will deserve neither and lose both.'" From Amy Thomas, M.D. "I am writing as a concerned citizen and a professional who supports Dr. Page and his effort to protect St. Louis County from the coronavirus. I am a pediatrician, and I practice in the ER and newborn nursery and neonatal intensive care in St. Louis County. As you know, our case numbers and hospitalizations are on the rise, and deaths in Missouri are following. The problem is due to the lack of restrictions, lack of masks, lack of a mask mandate in rural areas and surrounding counties. If our county follows suit, we will be overrun caring for these cases, and our pandemic task force will have to reduce care for other patients, exacerbating a healthcare gap that lingers from spring, from the spring shutdown. If this happens, businesses won't succeed in staying open, and you will hurt whatever chance they have in recovery during the holiday season. This pattern, this pattern repeated itself in Houston and Hidalgo, Texas, Atlanta, and Miami, and other areas, and we would be no different. The mask mandate and dining restrictions set by Sam Page are supported by most doctors in the area. Not everyone is vocal at the moment because they are happy with the precautions. I recommend you continue to set the standards that have protected our areas so far, especially now that we are moving into winter, have serious concern about exponential case growth. Masks work to reduce transmission of the virus and reduce mortality from COVID. There's an attachment. Vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Sincerely, Amy Thomas." From Mitchell Godsy. "I'm asking you to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223. These are hard times for everyone. Like others, my family has made sacrifices since March to do what is best for our community. We seek out advice from our physicians and read medical journals, because as much as we want to go back to normal, we know our community is not ready. We do everything we can to continue making purchases, buying local these past months. As council members, it is your duty to uphold measures to protect the St. Louis County residents. People are being taken advantage of, being told this is all politics, and you just have to yell at your representatives, and we can go back to normal. Again, everyone is making sacrifice. You must listen to the science and the public health experts in this situation. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19, and states with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to states without, not to mention that it is extremely easy to do. Removing the mandate removes support for local businesses. Smart business owners will continue to issue their own mask rules, but with no enforcement, and others will close over and over as COVID-19 spreads through their employees, and as it has time and time again in just this short window. Removing the mandate hurts businesses and the public. Support the public as a whole, not just, excuse me, not just allowed and well organized. Vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you." From Brian Olivia. "Please support Bills 220, 222, and 223 to give oversight to the council and the county executive's authority to continue emergency powers and make unilateral decisions. I also urge you to please vote against the county board of elections accepting money from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. Several counties who have received this money have been sued across the United States because the money amounts to bribery. Also, the World Health Organization is encouraging opening everything up and not continuing to close or limit business function. They have issued emergency press releases encouraging the United States to stop shutting things down. Please take note, also, the advice of many scientists and doctors are also encouraging these same next steps. Living in fear, living in fear is not living. Respectfully, Brian Olivia." From Jason Talbot. Quoting County Executive Sam Page as written in an article by the St. Louis Public Radio in April of 2019, end quote, "I want to assure everyone in St. Louis County from the very beginning that we will have absolutely no tolerance for pay-to-play politics, no tolerance. We strive to set a new standard for ethical government, and we will be open and transparent, so you can hold us accountable," end quote. Eighteen months later, it appears the county executive has forgotten about what he assured his constituents. Well, the county executive hides from meetings and dodges the questions and comments from his constituents. How is that being open and transparent? What else is he hiding from the constituents? Where is the new standard for ethical government? Why is the county executive having, why is the county executive against having checks and balances? How is the county council, being elected council members, currently able to check the county executive's decisions on what is right or wrong for their constituents, rather your constituents agree or disagree with the county executive's decisions? The latest state audit report shows the current county charter has lack of oversight. The bills on the table tonight would give other elected officials oversight. We all know what happened in the past when there was not any oversight. All elected officials need to have a say when something affects their constituents. Remember the quote, "No tolerance for pay-to-play politics," end quote. This isn't about being in an election cycle, as the county executive routinely deflects with his answers. This isn't about getting rid of masks, as Councilwoman Lisa Clancy has tried to stir. This is about checks and balances. Elected officials are supposed to be representing their constituents, not playing politics for their own agenda." From Julie Federer. "Good evening. I'm asking, I'm writing to ask for your support of Bills 220, and 222, and 223. I'm asking for your support because I care about the balance of power in our government. That being said, please ask yourselves what life events of you, your families, friends, and people in your communities missed out on the last seven months. Think about the elderly who are lonely and confused without family business. Think about those left to make critical healthcare decisions without the support of loved ones by their side. Consider the loss of businesses and rise in unemployment due to the extended shutdowns. Look at the huge increase of depression, addiction, and suicides since this began. Why? Why are we still flattening the curve when the hospitals are not understocked and they are not overrun with patients? We aren't living life, watching it pass before our eyes. We can't get lost, time back, but we can demand it for our futures. Enough is enough. Allowing one person this much control is irresponsible. Regardless of who sits at the county executive after November 3rd, we need the council to oversee and direct the decisions of the county executive position, to ensure that our freedoms and rights are protected and that the funds provided are used properly. Thank you for listening and for your consideration. Kind regards." From Kristy Raymond. "I urge you to vote no on Bills 222, I'm sorry, 220, 222, and 223. I appreciate Sam Page's leadership through this pandemic and want to maintain the current mask order, occupancy limits, even the sports regulations. I'm a mother of a soccer-loving child, and I love watching him play. I am happy to give up my role as a spectator if it means he gets to do what he loves while being safe. As an educator, I enforce masks all the time if that means we can get our kids safely back in school. I fear that if you vote yes on these bills, that all of the work we have put in the last seven months will have been for nothing. Thank you for listening and for your leadership." From Donna Anderson. "I'm writing to support the passage of Bills 220, 222, and 223. It is time for checks and balances in the county. No one person should be able to dictate things that impact so many people. This is why we have elected officials, plural. Pass these bills as soon as possible." Excuse me. From Dina Ford. "I'm writing in support of Bills 222 and 223 to limit the power of the county executive. It has now been more than six months since we locked down for two weeks to flatten the curve of COVID-19. Our objective has been lost, and we now seem focused on the number of cases, even the hospitalizations and deaths that are down. The WHO has just stated that using lockdowns, excuse me, as the primary control method to combat COVID-19 is wrong. A recent study from Edinburgh University says keeping schools shut down will increase the number of deaths due to COVID-19. Added to that, the study says lockdowns prolong the epidemic, and in some cases resulting in more deaths long-term. Small businesses and restaurants are going bankrupt while Walmart, Home Depot, fast food chains are doing more business than ever. There has been no communication on when businesses can fully open without restrictions. Why should one person have to complete, have complete authority over the 1 million residents of St. Louis County? This authority should be temporary for an emergency, but not permanent, without representation from all council members. I don't understand how this has become a partisan issue. This is not Republican or Democrat, but a system of checks and balance. I'd like to ask the Democratic council members, if Paul Berry is elected November, would they still be against these bills? If the council would vote to ease restrictions, businesses could still require stricter measures, should they choose. As a certified public accountant and certified internal auditor for over 25 years, I know the importance of internal controls and segregation of duties. One man should not be in complete control of either the CARES Act money or the decision of opening or closing businesses in this pandemic. This would not be allowed at the Fortune 500 companies that I've audited, nor should this be allowed in county government. Lack of financial and operational oversight of the executive is appalling and needs to be corrected, both by limiting his power and hiring an independent, trained internal auditor." From Celia Donio, I hope I pronounced that correctly. "Please vote yes on Bills 222 and 223 introduced by Harder and Fitch. It is essential that even in a state of emergency that there are checks and balances at a local level, so one person does not hold unlimited unchecked power. It is time to reopen St. Louis County. We do not need any grant money provided by special interest groups. What we need is for leadership to be accountable." From Kimberly Wickman. "As I sat down..." As I sat down last night to write yet another letter expressing my concerns regarding the continued overreach of our St. Louis County Council, my first thoughts were, one, I wonder if Council Chair Lisa Clancy will throw another childish temper tantrum tonight during tonight's meeting, and two, will interim Page once again make the cowardly move of leaving the meeting the moment the first patron comment is read? The behavior displayed by several members of this council, specifically Lisa Clancy and Sam Page, is an absolute embarrassment. Nevertheless, it is what the residents of St. Louis County have come to expect from the county council. The condescending tone used by Lisa Clancy to speak not only to other members of the county council, but to the residents, to also the residents of St. Louis County, is absolutely unacceptable. In the past couple of weeks, she has referred to her constituents as both privileged and racist. She's made a state, she made, excuse me, made statement last week that the residents of St. Louis County do not know how much she and interim Page are protecting us. Well, Ms. Clancy, let me make something crystal clear to you. I do not need, nor do I want, your protection. As we, we as residents deserve transparency as well as oversight into how and why decisions are being made. No one individual should be given the power to make decisions without a system of checks and balances in place. For the past seven months, the residents of St. Louis County have been at the mercy of one, excuse me, one unelected official. I urge the county council to pass bills 220, 221, and 222. According to interim Page's own public Facebook page, he is a public servant that has spent his career uplifting people. I wonder how many of the small business owners who have spent the last seven months struggling to keep their businesses afloat and their families fed feel uplifted? As a parent of two school-aged children, I can state with complete certainty that neither of my children feel uplifted by interim Page's ridiculous and asinine mandates to shut down their schools and sports. As I've said it before, and I will continue to say it, interim Page is nothing more than a pompous village idiot, and it is time for him to be returned to his village. From Julie Graham. Support bill 222 and 223. Your constituents have made themselves very clear, and it is now time for you to listen to them both. Support bills 222 and 223 that provides input from all of our elected leaders on these important decisions that impact our community. You represent all of the people of St. Louis County, not just your political party. And let me make this crystal clear for you, Councilwoman, Chairwoman Clancy. I am not a Rockwood parent, nor am I a racist or privileged, and your tactics to silence the people of St. Louis County are disgusting and you should be ashamed. Julie Graham. Pardon me. From Mandy Schreiber. I do not like this Uncle Sam. I do not like this prideful scam. I do not like you dirty crook, or how you lie and cook the books. I do not like it when you steal, but do not like your backroom deals. I do not like you scam I am. I do not like your upper hand. I do not like this for our kids. I should choose, heaven forbid. I'm smart. I know that nothing's free, but once, just once, let me see. I'll wash my hands. I'll keep my space. I'll wear a mask upon my face. I do not like your smug replies when I complain about your lies. I do not like this measured hope. I do not like it, nope, nope, nope. I do not like it when you bail, or when you're scared and tucked tail. Our kids deserve this. Don't be stern, so let them play and let them learn. I will not scream. I will not shout, but come November, I'll vote you out. From Tara Berger. Please vote to pass bills 222 and 223. Our county executive nor our health department should be burdened with unlimited power in the case of a public health emergency. I respectfully ask that you return to in-person county council meetings. These virtual meetings are bogged down by technical difficulties. If Dr. Page can have meetings in Starbucks, surely the council can find a way to meet safely. Your constituents deserve this much.
Continuing with public forum, Madam Chair. County, from David West, County Council. After starting to pay attention to the council meetings recently, I must say I am appalled by our leadership. I'm a straight-ticket Democratic voter, but I cannot reason why the county council, along with the county executive, will not win a series of checks and balances in place. With the scandalous history of the county executive position of the past year, who would even think that having a person in that seat with unmitigated power would be a wise choice? I am writing you to remind each and every one of you that you were put here by the people, and when the comments read before this meeting the past four weeks go longer than the time you have allotted, and when every single one is pleading with you to provide some oversight, I cannot believe you can sit there with a straight face, blame racism, the GOP, anyone but the people of the council. The numbers of people waking up to the dirty politics being dished out by this council, just like the comments, is growing every day. We are watching to make sure that you cast your votes to pass bills number 200, number 222, and number 223. It is imperative to restore checks and balances to our county government and heal the massive distrust of the former and current county executive. Also, I find it very curious that Lisa Clancy has to go out and recruit people to submit opposing viewpoints to try to silence the public opinion. It sounds strikingly similar to that other bill she called a special meeting to try to pass for a firm that is notorious for having a political agenda and is currently fighting multiple lawsuits. I thought the whole reason you didn't want to pass the bills, number 200, number 200, 222, and 223, were to avoid lawsuits. It is quite curious indeed. From Amy Oreglassio. Dear Dr. Page and council members, Tuesday is becoming my favorite day of the week. It is a day that I and hundreds of like-minded people get to have our voices heard. Yesterday was another day of small victories. Yes, I realize the victories were mostly due to Sam Page wanting a potential lawsuit to go away that shined light on his ambiguous guidelines and stripping people of their constitutional rights. Thank you to the Sam Moore Society for that demand letter and fighting for all of those you represent. I'm asking all council members to vote in support of 222 and 223 that will limit the power of Sam Page or any county executive so we do not find ourselves in this situation ever again. No individual should have this amount of authority without the support of a governing body. I would also like to call out my concerns regarding the grant that Dr. Page has taken from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. This organization specializes in ballot harvesting. Dr. Page, are you going to try to steal the election now? This is a very suspicious organization. I plan on using this information to ensure that we have responsible people volunteering to work the polls in November. Dr. Page has done plenty of underhanded, sneaky stuff during the last seven months, and this just adds to another, sorry, adds another to his very long list. From Emily Lasik. I cannot comprehend the objection to a balance within our government in order to allow for greater input. The only thing that has been asked for is transparency and justification for actions taken. Failing that, now we ask for the limitation of power from an individual that has not given the public that transparency. In asking for this, the public has been lectured and gaslighted by Clancy, as if we have no right to ask our representatives for explanation for the inconsistencies that exist. This has been an attempt to put people on the defensive to deflect from the focus of that, of this discussion, which is the vote on bills 222 and 223. Please do not participate or allow her to continue with false allegations and made-up demands. My husband has been out of work since March. My family did not get a nice vacation like council members did. I have to work, and I can't just ignore meetings like Page. We have a right to ask if this has been worth it. We have a right to ask why protests can happen, but not sports. We have a right to ask why I can't get a fountain soda. I have the right to ask why my three teenage sons are essential workers, but education and teachers are not. We have a right to remind the council that our voices placed you in this position, and our voices can remove you. You are representatives on our behalf, not our parents, bosses, or dictators. We are not stupid. Please do not treat us as such. Vote for bills 222 and 223. From Marla Fastenow. Dear Dr. Page and county council members, I am writing once again to ask you to vote in support of bills 220, 222, and 223. I'd like to point out that some of the council members led by Lisa Clancy only want to defeat these bills. They are not even willing to reach a compromise or offer any means of fixing them. They are fighting against any kind of oversight or checks and balances. They are fighting against legislative balance and the voice of our elected representation. We now know there is a group of concerned educators, also being led by Lisa Clancy, who were asked to submit comments at 12:01 a.m. today. They were asked to write against bills 220, 222, and 223. They are calling them dangerous and trying to scare people with the wording. So this is what the chair of our county council has been up to, trying to get her cronies to drown out our voices? We will only speak louder. We will not be scared away. Notice that they are just trying to defeat the bills, not rewrite them to find a compromise. Notice they are not proposing alternative bills to return accountability and checks and balances to the county executive position and the Department of Health. Notice they don't want to fix them. They just want to complain and want to keep the power. The goal of Lisa Clancy and her concerned educator friends is to drown out the voices of St. Louis County. She does not want to hear our voices or try to understand where we are coming from. She only wants someone else to speak over us. Let's be clear here. These concerned educators haven't been too concerned the last several weeks. The people of St. Louis County have been concerned in speaking up the last several weeks. We will continue to speak up until we have oversight and checks and balances in place. From Debbie Bogard. Dear City Council, I respectfully ask that you support bills 222 and 223. This is about reasonable oversight. It actually doesn't have anything to do with whether I believe Sam Page has done a good job handling this pandemic or not. I am crystal clear in my understanding of the impact of these bills. No single person or entity should have sole authority on decisions with such far-reaching impact, and it has nothing to do with political parties. If Sam Page were a Republican, I would think the Democrats on the council would feel that this is a reasonable request. Please vote yes for both of these bills. Dr. Page, I urge you to support these bills as well. It is a necessary check and balance that is important, again, regardless of political parties. By approving these bills, you and the council have a wonderful opportunity to improve the way our county government is run going forward. Please urge our council members to support these bills, and please sign them when they get to your desk. It's also time to continue to ease your restrictions. I'm sure you've heard that the WHO does not advocate lockdowns as a primary means of control of this virus. Dr. Navarro said the only time we believe a lockdown is justified is to buy you time to reorganize, regroup, rebalance your resources, protect your health workers who are exhausted, but by and large, we'd rather not do it. While we are not completely locked down, the current capacity restrictions are still causing irreparable harm. Please lift all capacity mandates immediately. From Melissa Miramonte. I am requesting the council vote yes on bills 222 and 223. These bills are not about wearing a mask. I have no issue with wearing a mask and did so when in public before there was ever a mandate. These bills are about limiting the power of one person and installing checks and balances in the St. Louis County government. To the council members opposed, please do the flip test. If the county executive were to be a member of a different political party or have different views than you, you would likely support these limits on individual power. From Sydney Jackson. Good evening, Dr. Page and council members. My name is Sydney Jackson. I am a St. Louis County resident and mother of an eight-week-old son. As a mother of an infant, I am grateful for the health measures that are in place. I do not take him into any public space unless absolutely necessary, but when I do have to take him, I am comforted in knowing that we have a mask mandate in St. Louis County which will help keep him healthy. These measures not only keep him safe.
Continuing with the council comments. From Julie Cabanaw. Dear interim county executive, county council members, and especially disruptor, as she refers to herself, Council Chair Clancy, who believes those of us who are in favor of these bills are, as she put it, "just against masks, partisan, privileged, racist." Please know I am Democrat. I am educated. I am a professional. I have worked for everything I have, but I am also very aware that the color of my skin provides me privileges others might not have, which is something we should all realize. I wear a mask. I socially distance myself by six feet or more. I believe COVID is real. I know I am susceptible to COVID. I go above and beyond to make sure my family and I are safe. I am also part of the STL County Sports Families Against Youth Sports Mandate Group. I am someone who wants the county executive position and Department of Health to have accountability and checks and balances. I am also one of the hundreds of people who send my comments to the council each week to be ignored. It is easy for you to make assumptions about people when you don't listen to them. In contrast, I have listened to all of you. I have watched your eyes roll. I have watched you skip out on meetings. I have watched you disrespect your colleagues. I have watched you use our children as political pawns, and I've experienced you ignoring your constituents. You want to characterize anyone questioning this absolute authority as selfish, childish, extremist Trump supporters. As I said, I am a Democrat. I am offended to by your name-calling, and let me be perfectly clear, I reject Trump. You are the ones who clearly need to be reminded that this is a bipartisan issue. You are the ones who need to be reminded that eye-rolling is childish. Not showing up to meetings or skipping out when you are hearing things you don't like is immature. Being a dictator, mandating, and being on some sort of a power trip is extremist Trump-like. I and many others are Democrats, and we want to be heard just as much as everyone else. Please listen to us. Please see this as bipartisan and do your job accordingly. Let our kids play safely. Change the spectator rules and let our entire families watch. Support bills 220, 222, and 223. Next comment is from Sonia McGowan. Dear counsel, as a teacher looking at working in a building with 140 adults and 900 or more students, I am very nervous at the prospect of infection. I am even more concerned if masks become optional and protocols that keep infection are relaxed. Please do not cave to people in denial about the seriousness of this pandemic. I and many other essential workers cannot choose whether to report to work or not, so please vote against the county executive health mandates, 220, 222, and 223, and keep us as safe as we possibly can be. Next comment is from Blair Hopkins. Dear council members, I urge you to vote no on the bills you will consider tonight that would allow your council to override county executive health mandates. As a teacher in District 7, my number one concern is the health of my students, my coworkers, and myself. We must follow health mandates, and we must listen to science. I know, as more and more people wish for a return to normal life, that it can be hard to do the right thing and easier to do the popular thing. But as I teach my students, and I'm sure you teach your children, integrity means doing the right thing even when it might be unpopular. I ask you to vote with integrity this evening in order to protect the health of everyone in the county, in particular, students and teachers, and anyone else who has to gather in a large group for work. This pandemic is far from over, and there are still major unsolved concerns about how to make schools safe. We are counting on you to keep us safe. Vote to follow the science, not the loudest voices. Thank you. Next comment from Jill Clark. Please support bills 220, 222, and 223. Stop trying to fight oversight and checks and balances and actually represent the constituents of St. Louis County. It is sad this has turned into a political game. Represent the people who are asking you to vote for these bills instead of you asking people to help you maintain a dictatorship. Next comment from Jill Hume. I am a mother of three middle-aged, school-aged, Rockwood students who are equally crumbling during this lockdown. The anxiety and stress placed on my children the last seven months is immeasurable. Sam Page continues to push a fear-based narrative with his self-serving political agenda and forcing mandates that are unsupported by current data. We have learned so much about COVID since March. We have flattened the curve, our hospitals are not overrun, and it's time to get back to the activities we love and hold dear. Life is full of risks, and COVID is now one of them. By fully opening all sports, schools, and restaurants, we are not thumbing our noses at the elderly, working class, and high-risk, as Councilwoman Lisa Clancy suggested. But to the contrary, we can absolutely protect those of higher risk and coexist with COVID. The mental health of our children and prosperity of our community depend on it. On 10/11/20, an official from the WHO stated the following. Quote, "We in the World Health Organization do not advocate lockdowns as the primary means of control of this virus. The only time we believe a lockdown is justified is to buy you time to reorganize, regroup, rebalance your resources, and protect your healthcare workers who are exhausted," end quote. We have had ample time to do all of those things in St. Louis County. I am asking for you to pass bills 220, 222, and 223. There must be checks and balances in our local government to prevent any overreach of power. To suggest that the Rockwood parents who have been vocal about Sam Page's gregarious abuse of power is based in racism, entitlement, or one political party's agenda is insanely offensive. Depression, suicide, drug addiction, alcoholism, and child abuse are not subjective to race or economic status. We are fighting for every family's mental health and well-being in every school district, regardless of race, color, or creed. This Council has sat through roughly six hours of letters in the past month stating many concerned parents' positions regarding the need for oversight of the county executive. For Councilwoman Lisa Clancy's takeaway to be that they don't want to wear masks is just what their kids want to play sports is dismissive, condescending, and inaccurate. Please pass bills 220, 222, and 223. It's time for St. Louis County government oversight and for constitutional rights to be reinstated. Thank you. Next comment is from Cynthia Rogers. Dear County Council, as a physician, I was distressed to hear that legislation is being proposed that will likely be used to undo the public health measures that St. Louis County has in place that have resulted in our reduced positivity rate, 4.4%, compared to other parts of the state that don't have mask mandates and are at 14%. Arizona showed that mask mandates reduce their coronavirus rates by 75%. Our kids are returning to school and can only do so safely with reduced community spread. I urge you to not support this legislation, keep politics out of public health, and leave public health decisions to the public health experts. Next comment is from Erin Mauer. Dear Members of the County Council, I am writing in support of approval of oversight for bills 220, 222, and 223. Please vote yes. Sam Page cannot be trusted. There must be checks and balances put into place. Thank you in advance to the members who are voting yes. You are making a difference. Next comment is from Scott Travis. My name is Scott Travis, I have been a resident of St. Louis County for more than 25 years, and I would like to urge you to vote yes for bills 220, 222, and 223, or any such similar measures that limits the county executive's unilateral authority to mandate any particular actions during a state of emergency for more than 15 days without a supermajority vote by the county council members to continue with said orders. I believe this will better ensure adequate representation of the entire population of St. Louis County and preclude much, if not all, of the opportunity to abuse power for personal or political gain. No one person should hold such authority without appropriate checks and balances in place, regardless of the political affiliation of said person. Next comment is from Lisa Scott. Dear Members of the County Council, please support bills 220, 222, and 223. These bills ensure the county council the power to guide and limit emergency powers of the county executive. With a 15-day emergency power limit, the county executive can respond to emergencies, then the council gets 15 days, a cooling-off period, to review and give their stamp of approval. They can choose to extend, limit, or amend the orders. Their limits imply that one person is not a dictator utilizing the Health Department or any county department for his political enjoyment. The county council as a whole would be free to determine what is best for St. Louis County. In our current situation, I am concerned that what was once a 15-day shutdown to flatten the curve intended to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed has, seven months later, become worse than the curve, that family-owned businesses and restaurants are going under. Our county tax structure suffers along with the loss of beloved local stores. While corporate behemoths like Walmart and Target thrive, locally-owned businesses like Cousin Hugo's in Lisa Clancy's district and Wolf's Flower Shop on Gravois in Afton have been shuttered under the weight of these mandates. Thousands of unemployed workers no longer pay taxes and are fighting for their own survival. What favorite restaurant or store will be the next to be lost forever? These bills are not just about Sam Page and quarantines. They are reforms that are long overdue in reclaiming the balance of power for the county council. Remember the corruption of the Stanger administration? History should not repeat itself. I am concerned that the Budget Committee wants to accept election grant money from a political-leaning organization that will influence the processes and therefore the results of the election. These grants should be refused. Our county voting system should remain unchanged and unfettered by outside influences. Regarding our CARES Act money, who is the steward and where is it going? The county council as a whole should be supervising these expenditures under emergency powers. We don't know what future emergencies St. Louis County will face, but a passage of bills 220, 222, and 223 would ensure that emergency powers for the county executive aren't extended in perpetuity without the council's agreement. Next comment is from Deb Mayer. I am writing to you to voice my support of bills 222 and 223, which will provide for checks and balances in place, limiting the county executive from having unilateral decision-making powers. The past several months have been extremely eye-opening for me in regards to how damaging it can be to have one person have this much power. It is extremely important that the county executive and the county council make decisions that are the best for the whole of the people you represent, not necessarily what the county executive personally thinks or what the council chair personally thinks, but what is best for the whole. Casting your vote for bills 222 and 223 should not be about political party. Having checks and balances and control is as important if the county executive is a Democrat or a Republican, whether you are an extreme liberal or a conservative. This is not about Sam Page or Lisa Clancy. Checks and balances need to be in place regardless of who is our county executive and who are county council members. This is about doing what is right for the citizens of St. Louis County. And this is not about sports, it's not about education. These just happen to be the two issues that have brought these bills to light. They are about doing what is best to support the people who have elected you. Isn't that what each of you is here to do? Please vote in favor of both bills. Next comment is from Stacy Scott. To the members of the St. Louis County Council, I am asking you to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Why in the world would you pass a bill designed to override public health mandates made by the county Health Department during the middle of a pandemic? In looking at the bios of all the council members, only one, Dr. Sam Page, is a doctor. Does everyone else on the council believe they know better than the Health Department? Isn't the Health Department staffed with doctors and public health experts? Why would I want a retired police officer, a lawyer, or a marketing manager making decisions about public health? Would you ask a plumber to make a decision on the advice your electrician gave you? Probably not a great idea. I know there is a vocal group of parents out there who have a primary goal of dismantling anything put out by Dr. Page, regardless of whether it is in their best interest or not. Please know there is another group of people who trust the health professionals and think they should be the decision-makers during a time of crisis. Next comment is from Bridget Schmidt. Dear County Council. Medical doctors and public health scientists worldwide, including those from Harvard, Oxford, and Stanford, are petitioning for countries to open, discontinue the lockdowns. The petition is called the Great Barrington Declaration and can be found at, and they list a website. If highly intelligent medical doctors and public health scientists worldwide are recommending that countries should no longer be on lockdown, why is St. Louis County? According to medical doctors and public health scientists worldwide, we have devoted our careers to protecting people. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on short and long-term public health. The results, to name a few, include lower childhood vaccination rates, worsening cardiovascular disease outcomes, fewer cancer screenings, and deteriorating mental health, leading to greater excess morality in years to come, with the working class and younger members of society carrying the heaviest burden. Keeping children out of school is a grave injustice. Those who are not vulnerable should immediately be allowed to resume life as normal. Simple hygiene measures, such as handwashing and staying home when sick, should be practiced by everyone to reduce the herd immunity threshold. Schools and universities should be open for in-person teaching. Extracurricular activities such as sports should be resumed. Young, low-risk adults should work normally rather than from home. Restaurants and other businesses should open. Arts, music, sport, and other cultural activities should resume. People who are more at risk may participate if they wish, while society as a whole enjoys the protection conferred upon the vulnerable by those who have built up herd immunity. Please follow the recommendations being made by these worldwide, extremely intelligent medical doctors and public health scientists. Let them play, let them teach, and learn fully in person. Let bars, restaurants, and businesses operate in full capacity, and let the elderly have their visitors. Let us live our lives and not merely exist. Lastly, please vote in favor for bills 220, 222, and 223. Next comment is from Debbie Murphy. Changes proposed in bills 220, 222, and 223 to limit public health measures to 15 days is a recipe for disaster for the health and economic welfare of our county. As someone who lives in a household with severely immunocompromised family members, I've had to work from home and my household must shop remotely due to the actions of inconsiderate selfish individuals who refuse to wear a mask. Any additional freedoms these bills will allow some members of the council to enact, like lifting the mask mandate, will cause more deaths and economic instability. Curbing the power of the county executive and our Health Department professionals to protect residents of St. Louis County while we are reaching another peak of cases in this deadly pandemic is outrageous. Don't set the county up to fail. Vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Public health measures taken by our county executive and his cabinet have helped reduce the spread, and repealing these measures will directly cause the virus to rebound in St. Louis County. Next comment is from Amber Mueller. Dr. Page and County Council, I am a District 3 county resident and am writing this week to request you pass bills 222 and 223, which will provide oversight of the St. Louis County executive. The decision-making and power should be distributed amongst the county council and not in the hands of one person alone. Political affiliation is not the issue here. Rather, there should be a system of checks and balances in place. Currently, there is a lack of oversight, and this is something that should be repaired immediately to benefit and protect all county residents. I would also like to add that constituents fighting for their rights is not selfish, privileged, or racist in any way, as insinuated by a council member in recent weeks. It is actually quite patriotic to advocate for your rights and those of your family and children. By asking questions and demanding our freedoms, we have obviously struck a nerve on the council, who until recently has enjoyed little to no oversight by the residents of St. Louis County. But let's be honest, we are now on month eight of restrictions, and we still do not know what the end goal or plan is. Week after week, we are asking for data and for reasoning, and each week, we are disappointed by a lack of leadership and a clear plan for a safe return to daily operations of life. Our curve is flat. Thankfully, hospitalizations and death are down. The fear mongering must end. Please make our county proud by leading the citizens to a safe return of life, not continuing to scare and restrict our freedoms. Next comment is from Cynthia Early. St. Louis County Council members, I am urging you to pass bills 222 and 223. This issue is not about masks, it is about transparency in government and not suppressing the views of the constituents you have been elected to represent. I'm deeply troubled that this county executive and council members are seemingly unwilling to have proper checks and balances. Continuing with public forum comments from Jen Wilton. I am a resident of Kirkwood, and I am deeply concerned with the current bills 222, 222, I'm sorry, 220, 222, and 223 being proposed to override public health measures recommended by the county Health Department. As someone with multiple family members who are teachers, I am really upset that this small, loud group of families is demanding legislation to pursue their own interests at the expense of all county residents, including those tasked with teaching their children. The mask mandate we have in place has lowered case numbers in the county. Public health professionals, scientists, and the medical community at large all agree. Mask-wearing is the most beneficial tool we have at the moment to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. My parents haven't left their home in seven months. Please reject these dangerous bills that could take away a safety net for the most vulnerable among us. We need to be united, and this power grab during a pandemic is unconscionable. Thank you. From Rachel Lindsay. I write in strong opposition to bills 220, 222, and 223 before your vote later today. I live in Maplewood and have family in North and West County. These bills present too great a burden on local municipalities to navigate responses to this and future pandemics, if indeed such occur. Responses to pandemics and other natural disasters and emergencies should be driven by science and by thoughtful reflection on evidence, not by arbitrary deadlines that substantially burden already strained resources. Pandemics are by nature disruptive and unpredictable. They don't pause for summer, or school, or elections, or holidays. By definition, pandemics, from the Greek pandemos, are a threat to all people and certainly do not respect the many municipal boundaries in St. Louis County. They demand collective action and sustained community responses regardless of zip code. I would much rather the council be spending time and resources on responding to this threat than convening fortnight after fortnight to relitigate its real and present danger in our county. And from Mark Pearson. For far too long, we have allowed Sam Page, a county council appointee, to use unchecked and potentially illegal emergency powers to shut down nearly any part of our lives for an indefinite time period. The council and the compliant St. Louis press have not challenged him at all. It was only after massive public outcry and his fear of not being elected that he finally eased some restrictions just in time for the election. After 18 months, Sam Page still won't even provide basic statistics like the 14- to 17-year-old age group numbers or proof of restaurant or youth sports spread. These injustices cannot continue to be indefinitely unchecked. We need our county council to lead and not be a partisan rubber stamp. The disgusting comments from Council Chair Lisa Clancy made last week makes me wonder if she is delusional and thinks she is Nancy Pelosi fighting against Trump and not a local St. Louis County politician fighting for St. Louis County and our families. Clancy apparently hates children over five and their parents and doesn't want to do her job and provide oversight of Page and his indefinite close downs. She calls us racist rubes and science deniers because we think our kids would be better off back at school and playing youth sports. We also want them to take precautions and do these things safely. It's racist and detrimental to all public school kids to not provide in-person...
to not provide in-person school to the kids not lucky enough to attend a private school. We are worried that the long-term effects of Sam Page's policies on our own children. The county council should be too. It's time for the council to curb our county executive's power and provide actual oversight. Please vote for Bills 220, 222, and 223 because it's the right thing to do. And from Laura Burkhart. I'm writing to you in opposition to Bills 220, 222, and 223. It is incredibly obvious that this is an attempt at a power grab by members of this council. This is not about checks and balances, as some members state. In the middle of a deadly global health pandemic, I trust the decisions that are made by the Department of Public Health. I have two high-risk children, and I do not need my councilman playing politics with their lives. I am concerned about what passing these bills would do to the mitigation efforts that have been put in place and have been proven to be effective. I am especially concerned about what this would mean for our mask mandate, our capacity limitations, and our regulations in the classroom. We are on the right track and lifting these guidelines, which we know is the ultimate goal, would be detrimental to our community. From Gail Crone. Please support Bills 220, 222, and 223. There has been a lack of oversight in the county executive position that goes back years and needs to be fixed. Please vote for return legislative balance and the voice of our elected representation. Please do not accept any money from outside sources for elections. This is far too much opportunity for problems. The attempt to rush the passage of the grant acceptance without detailing how that money would be utilized. There is no such thing as free money. What are the stipulations of acceptance? Now, the WHO has come out and recommended against lockdown as a primary tool to fight COVID because of the destruction it causes. Remove the restrictions. And from Jeannie Ames. As a citizen of St. Louis County, I respectfully expect you to be the fiduciary agents your elected position requires by passing Bills 220, 222, and 223. Taxpayer stewardship includes balancing the amount of power one person has over revenue, regulations, or restrictions affecting the free market and constitutional right of private citizens to produce, supply, demand, and consume goods. That is capitalism in a constitutional republic. Although our resident Marxist, Marxist Lisa Clancy wholeheartedly disagrees. Believing, as Marx does, that the state should control supply and production and redistribution of wealth is a right. She is in the wrong county and the wrong country. Clancy is wrong in the facts and wrong on the philosophy. We've seen how ineffective Sam Page is on all fronts. I hardly find it necessary to mention him at all. I know I won't be voting for him, but the next county executive agrees with these bills, as an honest statesman would. I implore the council to approve Bills 220, 222, and 223. Respectfully, yours and capitalism and liberty for all. And from Jessica Moran. Week after week, I have sent an email calling for an appeal for you to end the St. Louis County mandates, such as, but not limited to, wearing masks, denying access, limiting capacity, limiting youth sports, virtual school, and social distance restrictions. As an adult, I am fully capable of mitigating risk for myself and my family. While I am not unsympathetic to those affected by COVID, I can logically deduce that the 0.07% doesn't justify the hardships placed on the other 99.93% of the population. In addition, the WHO is now calling for world leaders to stop locking down their countries and economies. Lockdowns just have one consequence, that you must never, ever belittle, and that is making poor people an awful lot poorer, stated Dr. David Navarro, WHO. As someone who has not been able to work since March due to closures on my gym, I can personally attest to the hardships of these lockdowns. Additionally, the CDC released a report in September showing that masks and face coverings are not effective in preventing the spread of COVID-19, even for those people who consistently wear them. A study conducted in the United States in July found that over seventy percent of the case patients were contaminated with the virus and fell ill despite always wearing a mask. Your mandates are no longer about health, but a muzzle to keep people living in fear and division. Sam Page, you have abused your authority long enough. Lisa Clancy, your behavior at the last meeting and your accusations of racism is deplorable and unprofessional, as is your tactic to suppress voices like mine by trying to strategize those that support you and the timing of receiving the emails so that they block out any voice of opposition. No citizen should have to play games to have their voice heard. The time is now to vote yes for Bills 222 and 223, to lift the restriction and let people go back to work, go back to school, and to regain the lives and freedoms that were taken from them. From Gina Bowers, M.D. I write to you as a concerned citizen and physician. Please be aware that our mask mandate is responsible for the difference between a positivity rate of fourteen percent in Missouri and a four point four percent in St. Louis County. No one likes wearing masks or even being told what to do, but this is the sacrifice that we must make to proceed with our normal activities. We must wear the masks to keep our children in school, keep our stores open, and keep our hospitals manageable. Unfortunately, there is much that remains unknown about SARS-CoV-2, but we do have very clear evidence that masks are effective in diminishing transmission. We must put politics aside for a moment and listen to our public health experts on this matter. Ultimately, we all have the same desire to move past this pandemic, and masks are undoubtedly the quickest way to achieve this goal. From Lorraine O'Regan. Please, please, please reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 that propose getting rid of mandatory mask wearing. Mask wearing is what gives us any bit of normality. It allows us to have safe and stress-free interactions with friends and family, to engage in normal and essential activities like going to work and school, attending health appointments, going to parks, going to a restaurant, participating in extracurricular activities, keeping our local businesses running. Wearing a mask protects you and me from this deadly virus, especially as we enter winter flu season. No worker who has managed to keep their job or child who has returned to school is complaining about wearing a mask. Wearing a mask is the decent, responsible thing to do. And from Jessica Huff. My name is Jessica Huff, and my family and I reside in Fenton. As a public health professional, parent, and member of the community, I am deeply concerned with the current Bills 220, 222, and 223 being proposed to override public health measures recommended by the county health department. I am deeply disappointed in my councilman, Tim Fitch, for indulging anti-science zealots in the creation of these bills. My seventy-three-year-old mother, who lives in Creve Court and just beat lung cancer in April, is fiercely independent and has benefited greatly from the mask mandate put in place by the county. After months hunkered down at home with limited public engagement, she now feels safe enough to leave her apartment to do her own grocery shopping and run her own errands, all of which I was doing for her in addition to taking care of my three small children. I know many people have argued about personal responsibility and suggested that the vulnerable population should just stay home so they don't have to wear a mask in public spaces. It saddens me that people fight tooth and nail to disregard the needs of our most vulnerable. Public health professionals, scientists, and the medical community all agree. Mask wearing is the most beneficial tool we have at the moment to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Please reject these dangerous bills that could take away a safety net for the most vulnerable among us. From Greg Blankey. I am a local business owner in St. Louis County, and my wife is a schoolteacher at a local public school. We are asking you to vote yes on Bills 220, 222, and 223. The decisions that have been made solely by Dr. Page regarding restrictions on business, schools, and sports have had a devastating effect on our community. Businesses such as Cousin Hugo's, Cucinelli's, Pueblo Nuevo, and many more restaurants and locally-owned family businesses have shut down permanently due to loss of business from overreaching restrictions. The impact of these restrictions on our youth is heartbreaking. My wife has dealt with students who have a lot of difficulty learning in a virtual environment. My own children are suffering due to lack of socialization and not having daily face-to-face conversations with their peers. Decisions that impact the entire population of St. Louis County need to be made by the members of the council that we, the people, elected into office and not by one sole individual. The devastating impact of the decisions made by Dr. Page cannot be reversed. Each member of this council now has a choice to pass Bills 220, 222, and 223, so future decisions that impact businesses, schools, and our local economy can be thoroughly discussed and voted on by an entire council and not made by a sole individual. I would like to make this crystal clear. Please pass Bills 220, 222, and 223 for the betterment of St. Louis County. And from Nora Riaz, M.D., M.P.H. I strongly urge the council to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 as they hinder the speed and efficacy of public health measures. As a pediatrician and master's in public health, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Our effective mask mandate and strong leadership of Sam Page has kept St. Louis County positivity rate much lower than the rest of the state. States and counties with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Many of my COVID-positive pediatric patients come from surrounding counties without strong public health measures. I have taken care of children diagnosed with COVID, from infants to teenagers. I had a one-month-old baby girl with COVID who had to be hospitalized and separated from her family because the entire family had COVID. The spread to the baby could have been prevented with stronger public health measures in that county. Public health saves lives. Bills 220, 222, and 223 will weaken our public health institutions. I strongly urge you all to vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. From Renee Cortez. Please vote for Bills 222 and 223. The American Congress for the federal government, a system of checks and balances. Sadly, the St. Louis County government does not currently have a system like that currently in place. This is how corrupt executives like Steve Stanger and Sam Page are allowed to get away with as much corruption as they have. Sam Page promised transparency and delivered nothing but decisions based on sketchy and invisible data. The original legislation to set up a system of checks and balances was rejected by this council because haste was necessary to get the money to struggling communities. Then Page sat on the CARES Act money for five months, then a few weeks before the election decided to start handing out the money. In the meantime, businesses are going under left and right, and your constituents are suffering. Please vote yes on Bills 222 and 223. A vote against these bills means that you are complicit if and when the corruption associated with this situation is made public. A no vote also invites legislation from the state in order to curb those emergency orders. A no vote will cede local control of emergency matters to the state. I know you do not want that, but you also know that the state has the votes and impetus to do it. From Dr. Patricia Parker. I am a seventy-one-year-old resident of Kirkwood, and I find myself greatly concerned by the current level of misinformation being used to make draconian pronouncements, placing ridiculous restrictions on our children and their parents. My heart sinks as I watch five- and six-year-old children playing outside in masks, parents resorting to extremes to be close to their children playing sports in case of an accident because of limitations on spectators. To see no true checks and balances in place is simply not American, in my opinion. I support Bills 220, 222, and 223 so that there is oversight for the council. Thus far, the actions taken by Sam Page have been bordering on actionable, and Lisa Clancy appears to be not only uninformed, but a little dim. To classify all people concerned as racist, elitist, mask-hating morons is just ridiculous. I am old, and I have COPD. I know my risk factors, and I am responsible for myself. I do not need some twit and an egomaniac dictating my life. In closing, let me say I was a college sophomore when I was nineteen, as was my daughter and is my granddaughter currently at Truman University. Why would anyone include nineteen-year-old adults in high school statistics? When I was teaching at Maryville University, often heard was "GIGO," garbage in, garbage out. So applies to the statistics we continue to hear and have impact on our lives. And from Laura Hughley. I write to you today in support of Sam Page's actions in keeping our county safe during this global pandemic. To handcuff his emergency safety and public health order authority to fifteen days and then require council approval throws a lot of uncertainty into the mix for our essential workers who rely on the public they interact with to be masked and their employers to follow other safety precautions. Additionally, this uncertainty is bad for businesses and schools which are going to great lengths to make appropriate plans based on the steadfast leadership Sam Page with the help of our public health directors. These public health measures succeed only through widespread compliance, and I fear that if these decisions are in the hands of the council, anything but a unanimous council will signal to our community that compliance is not necessary or at least debatable. Furthermore, with residents of surrounding counties making up a good portion of our county hospitalizations, with the Franklin County Hospital already sending overflow to Mercy South, and with the one Jefferson County Hospital sounding alarm bells that they could be at capacity soon too, our county needs to continue its strong compliance with safety measures in order to protect our healthcare system, which clearly is going to have to bear the burden of the recklessness of surrounding counties. Lastly, I do not trust my councilman Fitch with these decisions because he replied to my email imploring him to help get Missouri cases under control so my friend could visit her elderly and sick mother in New York last month saying, "I was in New York City last week, and all I was asked at LGA Airport was if I had any coronavirus symptoms. Go look at the flights leaving Lambert for New York, multiple flights every day. I also drove into New Jersey, no questions asked." Both New York and New Jersey have mandatory fourteen-day self-quarantine orders for people traveling from Missouri. That councilman Fitch did not abide, excuse me, that councilman Fitch did not abide by those laws gives me no faith that he could or should have any part in the public health decisions necessary for St. Louis County. The Republican leadership on the St. Louis County Council, rather than sow dissent and division with these various bills, should make better use their time by imploring our Republican governor to issue a statewide mask mandate. When Arizona's Republican governor did that, their seven-day new case average was reduced by seventy-five percent in less than a month, and that is over four hundred words, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, continuing. From Keith Reynolds. Passage of St. Louis County Bills 220, 222, 23 is a mistake and a failure to correctly represent the citizens of St. Louis County. The United States, Missouri, and county are nowhere free of the COVID-19 pandemic. Statistics from multiple, highly credible sources confirm this fact. It would be foolish and dangerous to open St. Louis County at this time and any future time while COVID-19 is rampant. Missouri's governor is among the nearly eight million United States and twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty Missouri COVID-19 cases. Parsons intentionally ignored and blatantly repulsed CDC guidelines, wear a mask, social distance, no crowds, sanitize hands. The governor's behavior was utterly stupid. There is no other rational explanation. Parsons could have succumbed, joining the two hundred and fifteen thousand dead Americans so far. Recently, the governor has provided the following, perhaps a mandate to Missourians, including county citizens, he, Parsons, says people should wear a mask, practice social distancing, and wash their hands. If a recovered governor, victim of COVID-19, makes this admonition, why would the St. Louis County Council not heed this council and retain control over the county's response to COVID-19, especially when the trend is not good? Another fact that supports the position that passage of pro-COVID-19 Troika of bills is a mistake, Missouri, along with Tennessee, Ohio, New York, contributed to an average of 12.4% new COVID-19 cases in the past two weeks. As legislators, council members, your individual and collective duties are to maintain awareness of this pandemic in other municipalities. You must understand how COVID-19 has been managed well or mismanaged. In nearly every instance where COVID-19 is controlled, the CDC mandates have been enforced. When open-up efforts are undertaken, the disease returns, more deaths ensue. District 7 Councilman Harder, one of the co-sponsors of the COVID-19 bills, has stated the following, as taken from the county website. Since taking office, his goal has been to improve citizen safety. I asked Mr. Harder, as well as the co-sponsors of the COVID, pro-COVID-19 bills Troika, precisely how do these bills support goal attainment and specifically protect county citizens? I assume all council members share this noble safety goal. Do they? What has explicitly gained at the expense of citizen lives? Freedom to die from COVID-19? Thank you, Keith Reynolds. From Jim McGowan. As a concerned St. Louis County citizen, I am urging you to vote in favor of science and medicine and against the partisan bills seeking to override the county executive health mandates, and then in parentheses, bills 222, or bill 220, 222 and 223. The science and statistics of coronavirus, how it is spread and how to counter it are well-established and not up for debate. Masks and social distancing are two of the main defenses against transmission of this virus. To be blunt, these bills attempt to placate a small group of science deniers who do not wish to be inconvenienced by required safety measures such as wearing a mask during a pandemic. Those who will truly be inconvenienced by circumventing these necessary health directives are the citizens most susceptible to the virus. You are essentially deciding on whether to allow a few people to get their way because they do not want to accept the reality of a pandemic, or whether the health in the very lives of most, of our most vulnerable citizens will be protected. This virus has already killed over 200,000 Americans and over 1 million worldwide. Most people I know and talk to are in favor of the recommended safety measures we are following. Exacerbation of sickness and death is not worth the selfish comfort of a few. From Robert Jones. I'm compelled to express my opinion about bills 220, 222 and 223. I find it appalling that some would think that we should allow a simple non-action on the part of the county council to nullify the direction of the county board of health, especially in this time where the COVID cases are continuing to occur at an alarming rate. Even if this was to be considered, the timeframe for this non-action is ludicrous when the change in the state of the pandemic takes much longer than 15 days to determine accurately. It is also unreasonable to expect the council to convene every 15 days to maintain an executive order of any kind, much less one written in the interest of public safety. These bills 220, 222 and 223 should be struck down and any similar bills should be prevented from even occupying a minute of the council's and the public's time. From Emily Bailey. I am very concerned regarding the bills, current bills 220, 222 and 223 that are being proposed. Based on current science, consensus is that wearing masks helps stop the spread of COVID-19 and the CDC recommends wearing a mask in public settings. Unfortunately, instead of the public being united in the purpose to defeat this virus, mask-wearing has become a politicized issue. I am concerned that these bills are being proposed in order to undo the current mask mandate. Please base your decision on these bills using science as your guide, not politics. Without our mask mandate, we will increase the danger of the virus to all St. Louis County citizens, especially the vulnerable. Wearing a mask is an easy thing we can all do to help stop the spread of this virus. I strongly urge the council to vote no on bills 220, 222 and 223 and reject this politicization of public health. Sincerely, Emily Bailey. From Lori Schreiner. Council members, thank you again for reading our letters. I set my alarm to send this at 12:01 a.m. in order for it to be read. I hope that the email system works this week. Thank you to Councilmember Days for her bipartisan support of the matters before this council. It was also impressive to see Councilmember Days stand up to the bullying behavior of Lisa Clancy regarding Clancy lecturing the constituents and pushing through an election grant that is not appropriate. What insults will Lisa Clancy say to the county constituents tonight? It's also amazing that Lisa Clancy does not want these bills, 220, 222 and 223, to pass because she doesn't believe in her own ability to provide oversight to Sam Page. Given her inappropriate relationship with Sam Page and her conflicts of interest, I suppose that we should not be surprised. Thoughts from a county resident. Vote yes on bills 220, 222 and 223. Open up the county to save the economy. Let the kids go back to school and play sports. Provide transparency to our constituents on the data that is being used to support things like casinos being opened to 50% capacity, with parents not being able to sit in an open-air stadium to watch their kids play sports. Spend the CARES money and don't hold it over schools and businesses for political power. Thank you. From Michelle Frankie. I'm writing to urge the council to vote yes on bills 222 and 223 introduced by Harder and Fitch. These bills provide much-needed checks and balances to our county executive. If the mandates passed by the county executive are warranted, they will surely be passed. If not, the council then would have a way to block undue burdensome shutdowns. Please lift all mandates and get our county 100% open. Citizens should be able to judge how much risk they are willing to take when it comes to schools, sports, dining and all other activities. Bring back in-person county council meetings. We, the people, deserve to be able to sit in on our elected officials. Thank you. From Amy Hammerman. I'm writing to strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222 and 223. These bills are the result of a dangerous and misguided politicization of public health. I urge the council to focus on protecting the health of St. Louis County residents. Public universal masking has been found by public health experts to be effective in curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have had slower growth rates compared to those that do not, like Missouri. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. If the council overturns the universal mask mandate that the county puts, I'm sorry, let me start that again. If the council overturns the universal mask mandate, the county puts businesses in a difficult position, putting them at risk of not being able to enforce masking and other safety measures for their employees and patrons. If the mask mandate is lifted, I will no longer go out, go out to local businesses because I'm in a high-risk category of residents. I know that I am not alone. Without mandated safety measures, we endanger the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is simple, easy and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222 and 223. Thank you very much. From Mickey Ellington. Please vote, excuse me, please vote yes on bills 22 and 223. Oversight is needed for major decisions made for the county. I am frustrated by the fear-based politics that are being used to scare people from voting for these bills. County Executive has repeatedly said that he uses input from the Department of Public Health in making his decisions about COVID restrictions. I hope the public understands the DPH has not been in control over these decisions at any time, as insinuated by others. I called their COVID line in September asking about age-related COVID data that the county executive was using to base restrictions. The representative advisor manager and said they were not providing the data to the public at this time. They are still not providing the data under the county executive's watch. The Department of Public Health will still give input, but now the council as a whole will be able to question and provide detail on those decisions. Be accountable to the people of the county. Make reasonable and timely health-based decisions. We should not rely on one person's decision to mandate arbitrarily, delay easing, easing of restrictions, ignoring medical advice, and using political influence to delay providing those individuals and small businesses that need it the most. Thank you. From Sherry Pello. It has become abundantly clear that this council has had way too much autonomy over the years. It is high time that some checks and balances be put into place. One person should never be able to make all the decisions for other people. That is not the way our government was set up. We elect you to do what we want you to do. Our voices need to be heard and should always be welcome. What we are asking is simple, more input from the council on serious matters such as a pandemic. This is not an unreasonable request. What is unreasonable are the lengths that are being taken to shut bills 222 and 223 down. I implore you to do what St. Louis County residents want and vote yes on 222 and 223. From Harvey Fergman. Regarding the proposed need for a two-thirds majority to continue a state of emergency declared by the county executive due to a pandemic. If you intend to pass this bill, then it shouldn't also include the ability of a two-thirds majority to declare an emergency and enact appropriate measures should the county executive fail to do so, as we have seen in some of our surrounding counties. If this power is not currently vested in the county council, it would be remiss to pass the proposed bill without including this responsibility and accountability. So, if you are in favor of limiting the power of the county executive, then be accountable for taking action in the face of inaction by others when needed and not just for limiting someone else's ability to take action. From Amy Evansato. Hope I pronounced that correctly. We voted you into your positions to represent the needs of your constituents. Please vote to pass bills 222 and 223. One person should not have sole discretion to determine the needs of the entire county. This is not a dictatorship, it's a representative democracy. On April 22nd, Sam Page issued an executive order giving the Director of Public Health control to issue restrictions, and I quote, "until she deems that such restrictions are no longer necessary," end quote. Why is no one, why is no one overseeing the Health Department? He gave one person sole discretion to make decisions with no oversight? Excuse me? When Sam Page was asked on 10/5 at his press conference why more than 50 can sit outside at a restaurant but not outside for the sports game, he answered, "Ask the Health Department." So even Sam Page doesn't know why the Health Department has put the guidelines in place. Sounds like he's not doing his job. We were told 14 days to flatten the curve, to not overwhelm hospitals and to care for our essential workers. Then we were told our goal was to get under 5%. Then we were told to wear masks to protect each other and our most vulnerable. Now you tell us, and I quote from Sam Page's press conference on 9/30/2020, "This will not be over until the summer." He keeps moving the goal over and over again. Shouldn't he be focused on working with all of you to determine the best way to get us back to prosperity? He's not. The one person who currently has the authority to make these decisions is already planning for eight-plus more months of this. If masks are needed, the council can decide that. If limits are needed, the council can decide that. I'm asking you to vote yes on 222 and 223. Take back the authority your position holds to represent your constituents. Thank you for your time. From Sarah, and I'm going to mispronounce this, William. I hope I pronounced that right. I'm writing to show I'm in favor of supporting bills 220, 222 and 223. I don't feel one person should be in charge of making decisions for a million residents. I hope that you will do your job and listen to the majority of the county's thoughts regarding this topic. From Gina Rogers. Excuse me. My name is Gina Rogers and I'm a St. Louis County resident who opposes the passage of county council bills 220, 222 and 223. I trained in public health and strongly believe that experts in that field should decide what restrictions should be in place to prevent further community spread of any contagion. The mask mandate in particular should be supported by this council. It is the most beneficial tool in our arsenal against COVID-19. Any council member listening to the anti-science minority in our community should remember that their sense of personal entitlement does not represent the best interests of the population of St. Louis County. Vote no on bills 220, 222 and 223. From Susan Hannah. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222 and 223, as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will in fact hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear without the government's requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. For my family personally, COVID-19 has meant my kids have had to do school for the past five weeks from computers at home. I have therefore had to quit my job as a personal trainer to stay home and assist with their school. A dear friend lost his dad to the virus, another has not been able to hug her mom who is in a nursing home since March. The use of masks has proven to slow the spread of the virus, which will hopefully mean when my kids do start up in school in a few weeks, they will be able to stay in school. Hopefully, I will be able to return to work. Fewer friends will lose loved ones, and my neighbor will be able to hug her mom sooner than later. Masking is undeniably simple, easy and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222 and 223. Thank you for your time and efforts.